Tonight, the city of Regina fires its city manager after a month's long personal leave. The door opens for some wildfire evacuees to return home, but the firefight continues. And we'll take you behind the scenes of a Saskatchewan movie production. Live from our studios in Regina, this is CTV News. Good evening. Lee is away this week. Regina city manager Nikki Anderson has been fired by council after less than three years on the job. Anderson had been on personal leave since late April. CTV's Donovan Mace has the details on what her departure means for City Hall.
For the second time in three years, a Regina city council has fired their city manager.
Item MR 25-4 supplemental report, city manager update dismissal.
The decision dropping after a report presented to council by Mayor Chad Bishinsky and a 10 to one vote by councillors.
I'm comfortable with the process taken. I have the utmost confidence in city staff and administration and of course that of my colleagues.
To do my role as city manager to ensure that we're bringing to council exactly what they need in the way that they wanted.
Anderson was hired in 2022 by the previous council led by former mayor Sandra Masters.
Where I took great affront to it was this idea that I was unilaterally going against all of council.
Three weeks later, she was sued by then councillors Dan LeBlanc and Andrew Stevens when funding to address the city's homeless crisis was not included in her first budget.
It's less politically charged to have real report to council.
The city has since increased its budget priorities to address years of underfunding towards infrastructure and city asset maintenance at the cost of rising property taxes.
As a leadership team and as an organization, done our best to cut costs everywhere we can.
According to Mayor Bishinsky's report, the firing was without cause and Anderson will be paid a severance.
Since I've been elected in 2020, we paid out more than a million dollars to folks by firing them.
There has been too many changes. I support this change and hopefully those will be the last of them so we can be stable again.
Now, city clerk Jim Nichol will remain as acting city manager until a new replacement can be found. And when that happens, the new hire will be Regina's third city manager in as many years. Donovan Mace, CTV News, Regina.
Regina's explosives disposal unit was called out to the Cathedral neighborhood this afternoon. Police sent out an advisory just after 1:30 PM advising the public the area near 13th Avenue and Ratalec Street was blocked off to traffic. Crews were seen packing up around half an hour after that advisory came out. It's unclear exactly what caused the explosives call, but a passerby told CTV News, the call involved a home and not a business. The road has since reopened. Casino Regina is tearing down its parcade following the discovery of structural problems. The upper deck of the two level parcade was deemed unsafe. The 490 stall parcade was built in 2001 at a cost of $7 million. The cost of the repair was estimated at $8 million. Instead, it's being demolished and will be replaced by a parking lot that will have room for 370 vehicles.
Well, back in 2001, when the parcade was built, the depreciation period for the structure was set at 25 years, which is in one year from now. So right around this time, there was an expectation even then that some decisions might have to be made in terms of, do you spend more money to extend the life of the of the structure? Or in this case, we've decided to knock it down.
The demolition and creation of a parking lot will cost $3 million, which is less than half of what it would have cost to repair the structure. Firefighting efforts continue across northern Saskatchewan tonight. Right now, there are 57 active fires in the province, but there is some good news in the fight against the Muskag fire. As safety officials confirmed, the window for some residents to return to Beval is open. John Flatters has the latest.
As the already long wildfire season in Saskatchewan continues, the province has battled a total of 406 fires, far busier than the five-year average of 333 to date. The SPSA says efforts on the Muskag fire have been successful, meaning P3 or non-health residents could start returning home to Beval.
The other end of that fire, the far eastern side, is now impacting near the town of Pinehouse. And that community will now be going under an evacuation order and removing all of their nonessential residents from the community starting today.
Robert says 11 communities or around 3,000 residents are evacuated, including the community of Ramsey Bay, where the Bull Fire is less than four kilometers away. He says the community has a safeguard where evacuations are ordered when any fire comes within six kilometers.
So that happened. We have been working with most of our resources dedicated to some of that in the area, including heavy equipment and crews to ensure that it does not impact the community.
The province recently called for help from the federal government, which sent 300 Canadian Armed Forces soldiers to support SPSA firefighters.
CAF members, in conjunction with our provincial partners, are focusing efforts in three primary areas: Wayackwin, Beval, and La Lauch. This support enables in-place provincial wildfire teams to focus efforts on more critical areas, reinforcing inter-agency effort to protect lives, infrastructure, and valued land.
Robert says with warm weather in the forecast, there's not much help coming from Mother Nature, and he's more concerned about shifting winds.
As we move resources to try and anticipate the wind and the weather and the fire behavior, we have to be prepared to move them back and re-shift our priorities if needed. So that's going to be the biggest threat.
On Wednesday, the Canadian Red Cross announced financial assistance would be available for eligible evacuees who are not members of a First Nation community, as those members will receive financial assistance through community leadership. John Flatters, CTV News, Saskatoon.
On the heels of the Midwestern Legislative Conference in Saskatoon, Saskatchewan's NDP wants to see a concrete plan in place for nuclear power in Saskatchewan. It comes after Canadian and US leaders discussed the future of energy with the premier, saying the province will continue to move forward in the growing nuclear sector.
The public in Saskatchewan is going to have the opportunity to look at that plan, to provide feedback to that plan in the fall. We're tired of waiting. Saskatchewan people are tired of waiting. And again, this is too important to leave to press releases and, you know, we are losing opportunity with every minute we don't have a plan.
The government responded by saying it's been clear in its position to ensure reliable and affordable electricity in Saskatchewan, which includes careful consideration of nuclear power reactors. It adds multiple agreements have been signed with other provinces to develop small modular reactors, along with the establishment of a nuclear subsidiary at Sask Power. The province has also narrowed down site selection for Saskatchewan's first reactor to two areas near Estevan. Saskatchewan's government is issuing a warning about a scam that uses the premier's image to target Saskatchewan people. The Financial and Consumer Affairs Authority says fake social media posts that claim Scott Mo is endorsing online investment platforms are making the rounds. The FCAA says Premier Mo does not endorse or advertise any investment platforms. People are advised to always verify their investments and seek professional advice before investing any money. A similar scam has also been circulating using Prime Minister Mark Carney's image. All right, Sabine Ahmed joins us now for our first look at weather. We'll have a little bit of a preview of the Queen City X coming up a little later on, but weather-wise, looking fantastic for fairgoers this week.
Hot, hot, hot. Yeah, you're going to want to make sure you have all of your hat, your sun protection, everything if you're going to be spending time outdoors. Cole, and really, it's basically just an extension of what we have been seeing from the beginning of this week into the end of this weekend into the weekend. Those temperatures are gradually continuing to warm up by a couple of degrees each day. Now, we do have some heat warnings issued, but those are further in the northern part of the province, along with some air quality warnings that we are starting to see now. And most of those air quality warnings have reached down into southern Saskatchewan, primarily just kind of framing the eastern border between Saskatchewan and Manitoba. So air quality warnings are in effect right now, not into the Regina area just yet. But I will have more information coming up on that in your full forecast. Temperatures though, still sitting in the twenties for all of the province right now as we take a look there. And our average again is usually about 26, 27 degrees. We got up to about 23, but heading into the rest of this week, like I said, we'll see you warm up continue. And I'll have those details in your forecast. Cole.
Thanks, Sabine. Well, military police detachment at 15 Wing Moose Jaw is getting a new name. As Sierra de Souza Butts reports, the name honors the memory of a soldier who died of cardiac arrest while helping escort Canada's head of state.
To this day, Richard Hanson still carries the memory of learning how to fish with his uncle Dan.
He would explain the flies themselves that he would make and why they would float or why they would do a certain thing to try to catch the salmon or the trout. And it was a learning experience that I could remember with him.
Others knew him as Master Warrant Officer Norman Danny Elbridge O'Donnell. He died of cardiac arrest while leading a motorcade for Queen Elizabeth II during her visit at 15 Wing Moose Jaw back on July 30, 1978. In recognition of O'Donnell's more than 30 years of service with the Canadian Armed Forces, the military police detachment in Moose Jaw has renamed its building after him.
There's many examples over his career where he put himself on the line and put himself in danger to serve others. And that very much speaks to what we expect of our, not just our Canadian forces, but he was also what I consider a profession within a profession in that he was a military police officer.
Describing his uncle as a man dedicated to serving his community, Hanson says he is proud to see him being honored.
We have a special uncle and we really enjoyed the things that I've done with him. And to hear that he was going to be recognized for the service he performed was pretty special.
Members of the Armed Forces say O'Donnell exhibited what officers strive for, putting themselves in harm's way to serve others.
There's many examples over his career where he put himself on the line and put himself in danger to serve others. And that very much speaks to what we expect of our, not just our Canadian forces, but he was also what I consider a profession within a profession in that he was a military police officer.
Although it was not in his nature to talk about his service, O'Donnell's family says they are grateful to see his legacy will carry on in the military community. Sierra de Souza Butts, CTV News, 15 Wing Moose Jaw.
A young Canadian actress with Down Syndrome is in Regina for a movie role in a Saskatchewan-based romantic comedy. Madison Tevlin is a young woman with Down Syndrome, who along with a growing number of acting credits, also has nearly 400,000 Instagram followers. Wayne Mantika brings us a look behind the scenes of One Perfect Date.
Madison Tevlin often gets over a million likes when she posts to social media. This month, Madison is in Regina to star in a romantic comedy. It's being shot in several locations around the city and in Fort Capel.
Well, this is about Emma, who is a young adult who has Down Syndrome. And she is in pursuit of finding the love of her life.
So Evan actually thinks he has a girlfriend?
The film is written and directed by Lucas Frizzon and is inspired by his earlier short film production called Pen Pals.
I'm just showing people with different disabilities on our screen is that's what you see out in the world. And, you know, the actors that we have in these roles are extremely talented, super funny. It's a coming-of-age romantic comedy. So it's putting them front and center in there, knocking it out of the park.
I'm gonna ask her to meet me in real life.
The movie is called One Perfect Date and is one of the larger productions being shot in Saskatchewan this summer. It's due for release in theaters next year. Wayne Mantika, CTV News, Regina.
While fairgoers rejoice, the Queen City X is back for another year and the weather so far is looking fantastic. But there are some big changes for 2025, most noticeably a completely different Midway. Mick Fabel spent the day at the fairgrounds for us, taking a preview of what you can expect.
The gates are open and the lineups are forming at the 2025 edition of the Queen City X. This year's fair is being declared by the QCX as affordable, Canadian, and unforgettable. With the addition of West Coast amusements, the Midway looks considerably different with new rides to try for thrill seekers.
This is a big step for us. And I mean, we're excited to be here and we're going to do the best job we can. And I'm very, very confident that we're going to make a lot of people happy.
This year, the QCX is looking out for their attendees, both in rider safety and hits to the wallet. Results from a survey from last year reported affordability as a major factor for fairgoers, which was top of mind for organizers when planning this year's exhibition.
Months and months of analysis went into, well, what can we do? How can we adjust it? How can we still hit our targets, but make it more approachable for the community? And so where we landed was kind of in a nice middle point where we can still achieve our revenue projections, but it's much more approachable for the community.
Like any major event, security is always top of mind. Returning this year will be metal detectors at the gate, along with a visible police presence.
We also do a lot of community outreach at events like this. We deal with people who are in crisis. We deal with locating missing children. And we know a majority of our population is going to be here. So we want to be where the people are.
For those not wanting to go on the rides, there are a variety of foods to try and activities to check out inside. There are a number of musical acts scheduled to play every night, including Blue Romeo, who are the first to take the grandstand stage in an all-Canadian lineup. Mick Fabel, CTV News, Regina.
Coming up, why the Bank of Canada continues to hold its key interest rates steady and a sigh of relief on the West Coast after a string of tsunami alerts were called off. Major developments out of Ottawa tonight as the crisis in the Middle East continues to unfold. Prime Minister Mark Carney has confirmed plans for Canada to recognize a Palestinian state.
Canada intends to recognize the state of Palestine at the 80th session of the United Nations General Assembly in September 2025. This intention is predicated on the Palestinian Authority's commitment to much-needed reforms, including commitments by the Palestinian Authority's President Abbas to fundamentally reform its governance, to hold general elections in 2026, in which Hamas can play no part, and to demilitarize the Palestinian state. Canada will increase its efforts in supporting strong democratic governance in Palestine and the contributions of its people to a more peaceful and hopeful future. I spoke today.
The move from the prime minister follows similar pledges from the United Kingdom and France. It also comes as aid organizations warn of looming famine in the Gaza Strip during the ongoing Israel-Hamas war. Israel has argued recognizing a Palestinian state in the wake of Hamas's October 7 attacks would be rewarding the militant group. There won't be any rate relief coming for Canadian borrowers just yet. For the third time in a row, the Bank of Canada held its benchmark interest rate at 2.75. The central bank making it clear today that it's in a holding pattern, along with the rest of the country, until Prime Minister Mark Carney can get clarity on whether the trade war with the US is about to be over or about to escalate. CTV's Rachel Aiello has the details.
Uncertainty over the future of the Canada-US trade war is clouding the economic outlook in this country, prompting the central bank to again hold its key interest rate at 2.75%.
Growth in spending by Canadian businesses and households is being restrained by uncertainty. And new US tariffs are having profound impacts on directly affected sectors.
Today, this country's top banker said future inflation projections hinge on the outcome of the ongoing cross-border trade talks.
The tariffs have a permanent effect on the economy unless they're removed.
The decision was widely forecasted by the big banks, but came as a shock to Ontario Premier Doug Ford. He said staring down the economic uncertainty, it's never been more important to stimulate growth, and called on the central bank to cut interest rates now. How would you respond to that?
Look, we take our decisions independently of the political process. We are going to make sure that an inflation problem, a tariff problem does not become an inflation problem.
That tariff problem only growing today, with US President Donald Trump announcing 50% tariffs on certain copper imports citing national security. The sudden announcement adding to the pressure Prime Minister Mark Carney and his cabinet are facing. With the clock ticking and no new trade pact in sight, economists say there's a lot riding on Canada getting a good deal.
That's why I think, you know, you're seeing Canada sort of running the clock.
Though Trump's envoy to Canada still thinks there's a chance of an agreement by Friday.
It's Wednesday today, so you've got at least 48 hours and maybe up to 72 hours, but a lot of things happen at a close of a negotiation.
That time for Canadian companies like Al Gomez Steel is of the essence. Today, the company suspended its dividend after posting major losses, saying tariffs played a large part. Rachel Aiello, CTV News, Ottawa.
British Columbia is setting up a new police unit to combat human trafficking.
The creation of the new BCR CMP counter-human trafficking unit strengthens our ability to investigate these crimes, target traffickers through intelligence, education, and investigative means.
The 12-member team will work with police and other agencies to provide increased training to officers. They will also help strengthen the response to these crimes by promoting experts in the field to support criminal prosecutions. A sigh of relief for millions of people in coastal areas surrounding the Pacific Ocean, including British Columbia, where a tsunami threat has now ended. It was in place after a magnitude 8.8 earthquake off the coast of Russia. The quake struck 136 kilometers from the city of Petro Pavlovsk in far eastern Russia. Local media is reporting that several people sought medical help after the earthquake, but no serious injuries have been reported. Russian scientists say that this was the most powerful earthquake to hit the region since 1952. Meanwhile, Russia has canceled tsunami alerts for coastal areas in the far eastern regions of the country. Tsunami heights of between three and five meters were reported in the Kamatka Peninsula. Fortunately, that area is sparsely populated and there are no reports of any significant damage. Australia's attempt to launch its first rocket into space did not go as planned. The 23-meter rocket started off well, clearing the launch tower, but then started to hover before crashing to the ground. Despite the explosive result, the company is hailing the launch as a success, saying all four engines ignited and the flight lasted a total of 14 seconds. Pope Leo enjoyed a taste from his roots while taking a cruise on the Pommobile today. On a routine ride to greet the faithful gathered in St. Peter's Square, the Pope was stopped with an offer of Chicago-style pizza that came straight from the windy city. It's unclear how the pizza got to roam in one piece, a nearly 8,000-kilometer journey. Still ahead, how a years-old list of quotes led to some unique wedding vows for a Florida couple.
Tomorrow on CTV Morning Live, it's another weekend of rider football as the green and white head east to play the Alouettes. Wes Cates shares their keys to victory in X's and O's.
News, weather, and traffic. It's everything you need. CTV Morning Live, weekdays 6 to 9.
Welcome back. Let's take a look at what your forecast is going to be looking like heading into tonight, the end of the weekend, heading into the weekend, first weekend of August. I know nobody wants to hear me say that, but I'm going to say it like it is. All right, currently sitting at 22 degrees, winds picking up just slightly, over 10 kilometers an hour. The warmest we did get in the Regina area was about 23 degrees. So stayed within a couple degrees of what our average normally is. And that's going to change as we head into tomorrow and we see those temperatures start to climb. Now, we do have some warnings issued for northern Saskatchewan. Right now, these are essentially the excessive heat warnings that we're seeing in numerous areas further up north. And then from about Prince Albert, actually also including parts of northern Saskatchewan, but Prince Albert kind of clipping all the way down the eastern border, including Yorkton, not including Mooseman, but Wayburn, Estevan, we're seeing all those areas and more that are under air quality warnings. So again, the smoke could be affecting your visibility. And of course, any activity outside, if you don't need to be outdoors, maybe just wait until we start to see some of that smoke clear. Now, for Regina, the last I checked, the air quality health index is sitting at about a four, is expected to move up to about a five tonight into tomorrow morning. So also something to keep in mind for those who may be a little bit more affected by the smoke in the air. Other than that, we're going to continue to see mostly clear conditions, very clear conditions, a lot of sunshine, and temperatures continuing to be above seasonal as we head into tomorrow. So I don't really have much to talk about. Until we get into Friday, early morning, you can see some scattered showers in the southeast. And then there's a slight chance we could see some storm activity coming in from the southwest, down in the states and from Alberta, reaching into the Maple Creek area by Friday afternoon. And there it is, right there. So late afternoon, early evening, could possibly see some activity down in the southwest. That is not until Friday. But then really, the only precipitation is just some scattered pockets of precipitation rain coming through. Other than that, those temperatures are climbing. And you can see that La Lauch-Laranj getting into 30s tomorrow, mainly sunny, 28 for Lloydminster and Prince Albert, nothing but sunshine there, 29 and sunny for North Battleford, 27 and sunny for Saskatoon, Yorkton, 27, mostly sunny. And tonight, a little cooler than seasonal, dipping to eight degrees over in the southwest. Very warm tonight, 15 degrees for Maple Creek, 29 and mainly sunny for Maple Creek tomorrow, 27 and sunny, Swift Current, 27 and mainly sunny for Moose Jaw, also cooler tonight at eight degrees. Wayburn in Assiniboia below seasonal tonight as well, nine degrees there, but warming up to 27 for Assiniboia tomorrow, 26 for Wayburn, which is average, and a little cooler than average for Estevan, 24 and a mix of sun and cloud. For Regina, 11 degrees. We'll see a little bit of cloud cover, but mostly clear conditions tonight. And then tomorrow, warming up to 26 degrees, which is seasonal, but could see it warm up just a couple degrees warmer than 26 tomorrow, with also possibly the humidity playing a factor in that. But the winds anywhere between 10 to 25 kilometers an hour. And here's what your next week is looking like again to start August off, August 1st on Friday. Mainly sunny, 26 tomorrow, 28 for Friday, mainly sunny, winds picking up to about 40 kilometers an hour, 27 and a mix of sun and cloud by Saturday. And then by Sunday, actually, Saturday evening, we could see a little bit of rain. And then by Sunday, a chance of some scattered showers throughout most of the day. 27 is the expected high, 28 and nothing but sunshine on Monday. And then again, we'll possibly see some scattered precipitation on Tuesday, with a low risk of a thunderstorm in the afternoon. 26 is the expected high and very warm lows as well, nearing 20 degrees. And then by Wednesday, mainly sunny and back into just around average range, 25 degrees as the daytime high. So a very warm week to end July and start August, Cole.
Well, like we've talked about earlier on, it's fantastic for fairgoers. You know, I remember August seems to start cooler a lot of the time, but happy to see that's not the case this year. Couple of beach days in there, you know, good for anybody who's cutting hay right now.
Very important to get some beach days in.
Absolutely. All right. Thanks, Sabine.
You bet.
Well, it's pretty common to take down a funny quote now and then, whether it's on a whiteboard, a notebook, or even a note on your phone. But turning them into your wedding vows, that's a new one. Here's ABC's Danny New.
I've kept a running list of your most unintentionally hilarious quotes.
Earlier this month, while exchanging vows at a wedding in South Florida.
I once told you I love you. And you said, I love chicken nuggets.
One groom decided to read words from his bride.
I was thinking, oh, wow, we're going there. All right, let's do this.
This speech from Adam in Sydney's wedding ceremony has since picked up millions of views on social media, as folks hear Adam catalog some of the most memorable lines his now wife has delivered over the years.
You declared I'm a cinematographer while eating a bowl of cinnamon toast crunch.
One commenter writes, I'm jealous he gets to marry this legend.
Some of the comments were like, damn, he's roasting her. Did you feel in your heart this was a roast?
Not at all. It's, it comes from a place of love.
For the record, what Adam refers to as "the notes" first started being compiled about eight years ago, a few months after these two then University of Miami students started dating.
She said something and I was like, that is so funny. We're gonna laugh about that someday.
Sydney says she thought it was cute Adam found her so hilarious, but she had no idea that one day many of them would be read aloud in front of her closest friends and family. For example, her take on firefighters.
When we drove by a truck full of firemen, you said, oh, the fire extinguishers are here.
And a reference to their siblings. Two professional musicians who performed at their wedding.
When you go to that show where you win music, make sure you bring us. That's called the Grammys.
But Sydney says this all just shows how much they love to laugh together.
I think it's so sweet and it's hilarious and it's like a true reflection of our relationship.
Coming up, Lee Jones and Wes Cates break down the Riders' performance and Cody Fajardo's return to Riderville. And look ahead to this week's matchup in Montreal. Wardrobe consideration in part by Colin O'Brien Man's Shop.
And welcome to another edition of X's and O's with Wes Cates. This is my bye week, so I'm doing this from home. Wes Cates also rather busy as Riders get set to face the Montreal Alouettes in Montreal. And Wes, Montreal, one of the top teams in the league, although they will not have Davis Alexander in the lineup, they're going to have to go with, you know, McLeod, Bevill Thompson is going to have to play this one for them. So what do you think is going to be the toughest challenge the Riders are going to face in this one?
Well, you know what, Lee? Both teams have been playing really good football in some close games. I feel like the Riders have been getting out to some decent leads and then kind of letting them slip away, whereas Montreal's been... Whereas Montreal's been, been getting behind early, but finding ways to come back and get a win. So it's going to be interesting how that plays out in this one. Both teams are playing well kind of to finish games. And I think that this is going to come down to which team can control turnovers, not have any, and then turn the other team over. I think McCloud Bethel Thompson is obviously a quality quarterback in this league. And we all know Trevor Harris is as well. But I think McCloud will probably be more likely to be the guy to turn the ball over in this one. So let's hope that's the case.
Montreal's defense is one of the best in the league too when it comes to giving up points per game. The top two teams are Montreal and Calgary. But Calgary gives up a fair amount in the air. This team has got top-three numbers, both in stopping the Russian attack and the passing attack. So how pivotal is a guy like Trevor Harris, who is obviously having a great season so far, going to be to try to pick apart a defense that's been pretty strong so far this season?
Yeah, it's going to be crucial, Lee. I think that Trevor Harris has shown that he can adjust and make some changes, definitely coming out and having some big second half. So I think as long as the Riders don't abandon the run, because the run is just important to keep teams honest, keep them playing, you know, with a couple linebackers on the field and not just sitting back in a heavy zone with a bunch of DBs and just smothering the pass. So I think that, you know, you give them some dose of AJ Olet here, there's some O-linemen that are likely going to be healthy for this one for the Riders, so that should help. And then, yeah, just let Trevor Harris do what he does. He doesn't hold on to the ball too long, so he's going to read and dissect the defense. Hopefully Montreal's defense doesn't get too tricky on him and show him some looks that kind of confuse him. But with the receivers that we have and the fact that it's been just about any receiver every week, right? Hasn't been the same one. So Montreal's defense can't really focus on one receiver. I think that'll help Trevor spread the ball around and just be able to make plays as he sees fit.
Now, Emelis, of course, looks like he's not going to play. We've seen really good play from Obastelli as well as Johnson and of course Myers. But do one of those other two Canadians going to step up? Because we've had injuries to the Canadian receivers and you know either guy like, whether it's going to be Duncan Busby or Tommy Neild or even Mitch Picton if they put him back in the lineup. How much of those guys need to step up to kind of give that, that different look that maybe we haven't seen in the last few games?
Yeah, it seems like Trevor Harris likes Duncan Busby, so I'm expecting him to probably step up. Mitch Picton, obviously, when he's called upon typically does what's required of him. Neil, we'll see. I mean, he's a younger guy, but definitely the Riders are high on him. I was even curious to see if Memes gets a go this week. But I don't think the receiving corps, whatever they're doing in practice, they seem to be working and getting guys ready to go out there and play in multiple spots.
Well, we'll see if the Riders can solve their woes in Montreal. They typically don't do well. I think the last one may have been when that storm ended things early and he ended up winning it. But whether it's external or internal pressures they'll face, we'll see if they can get through in Montreal before their next bye week, which is pivotal with all those injuries. Wes, thanks for this. We'll have another edition of X's and O's next week.
It's going to be the game of the week, Riders in Montreal.
X's and O's brought to you by Campion College at the University of Regina. Well, despite improving to a best in the West, 6-1 last week, there were some additions to the injury report for the Riders. Now, as Jacob Carr reports, it's looking like Sam Emelis could miss action for the second time this season, but one receiver hopes it could lead to a magic moment.
Here's what happened to Emelis on that flight.
You can see he got hit low on the screen pass here.
Sam Emelis taking a hard hit to the knee during last week's game against Edmonton. As a result, the star receiver hasn't participated in practice this week for the green and white. In his place, taking team one reps has been fellow Canadian Tommy Neeld.
I just want to bring, bring my own energy. I'm the type of person play one play, one play at a time mentality. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to play hard every single play and make, make the play when, when it comes, when it comes my way.
Neeld spent the first four seasons of his CFL career with the Toronto Argonauts, so Riders head coach Corey Mace is familiar with what he brings to the table.
Big target, smart player, definitely knows how to fit in the zones. He can block around the box and he can go up and make some plays. So he's had a good career to this point. Again, you know, like I said last week, excited that we had an opportunity to go get him.
Speaking of familiarity, playing in the East Division, Neeld has plenty of experience playing in Montreal, the Riders' next destination. He had an interesting comparison when asked to describe playing in Quebec.
That's a lot of fun playing in Montreal. It kind of feels like, like McGill Stadium's like something out of Harry Potter. And it's like, it's just a, it's a great, great atmosphere for, for the CFL.
Neeld says he's a big fan of the movie series and tries to watch through all eight films at least once a year. His Hogwarts House also happens to be close to Ryder Green.
I feel like, I don't want to say, I played the Harry Potter game and I got put in Slytherin, but yeah.
Neeld may be able to snake his way into some open areas down the field on Saturday in order to help the Riders improve to 7-1 on the year. Jacob Carr, CTV News, Regina.
Other news out of Riderville, the team has signed Canadian defensive lineman Deshawn Stevens. The Toronto product will join the green and white after spending time with the Ottawa Red Blacks and BC Lions. Stevens has eight career defensive tackles and 10 special teams tackles. The 28-year-old was drafted sixth overall by the Red Blacks in 2021. Still ahead, how an Alberta museum is keeping the art of Morse code alive through a new generation.
Welcome back. Let's take a look at your rural forecast heading into tomorrow. We're going to see a lot of sunshine. Again, though, we are still seeing some areas, including the Hudson Bay area, that could see those air quality warnings continue into tomorrow as well. But a lot of sunshine and temperatures seasonal, if not warmer than seasonal, like Meadow Lake getting up to 30 degrees tomorrow, 29 for Hudson Bay, 28 for Spiritwood, Lloydminster, Kindersley. And right in that average range for Winyard, it's 26 degrees. The further south we go, temperatures will remain the same. However, in the southeast, we will see a little bit more cloud cover. Carlisle, a mix of sun and cloud, 23 expected there tomorrow. Broadview, 24, Coronac, 27 with a mix of sun and cloud. And then over in the southwest, 29 and mainly sunny for Maple Creek, 26 and sunny for Eastside Cypress and Lumstoun at Pilot Butte, also expecting to get to 26 degrees tomorrow. If we take a closer look at Hepburn, where internet speeds up to 1 gig are available through Sastel, located about 45 kilometers north of Saskatoon. Tomorrow, nothing but sunshine and right in that average range for this time of year, 26 degrees is the expected daytime high, with those winds anywhere between 15 to 20 kilometers an hour.
Well, Morse code is a dying art. It's in danger of disappearing forever. But a Calgary Heritage Museum is teaching a new generation of telegraph operators. It's one of the only places in North America that's teaching the craft to teenagers. Kevin Fleming reports.
They're two of the six junior members of the Morse Telegraph Club at Heritage Park. Sienna Wright says it's easier to send a message in Morse code than to receive and decode one. Her technique is to write down what she hears and then turn the code into letters of the alphabet.
I am fascinated by the past. I really like learning how things were done and dressing up like the past. So I really enjoy doing this.
Ariane Aubin has memorized the code and says it takes a keen ear to decipher an incoming message. Her sister is a member too, and they practice at home.
Yeah, it's kind of fun. I've texted her in Morse code before. I've also tapped between our walls at home. So it's sort of like our own little thing that no one else really understands.
Morse code was invented in the 1840s as a way to send messages quickly over long distances.
The railroads primarily used it to transmit train orders from a dispatcher to, oh, a little station like this. That was the chief reason. They weren't using it all the time. So any extra capacity in the system, it was telegrams.
To get messages to engineers and conductors of a moving train, operators used hoops at the end of a long pole so the train didn't have to stop, a technique still in practice at the park. Marilyn McGuire heads the club and says visitors at the park enjoy seeing their names spelled out in Morse code. She says it's important to teach the craft to the next generation.
It's a dying art. People who did it as a job are in their late 80s, some of them in their 90s. There are a few that have picked it up and learned as their 70s. But this is the only club internationally that has been working with young people.
We have people come in that say their grandparents used to do it. And it's sort of nice for like a newer generation to sort of continue, know a bit of the history.
Kevin Fleming, CTV News, Calgary.
Now, let's take a look at your markets. The TSX was down about 170 points today. Same for the Dow Jones at 171 to 44,461.28. The dollar was down about 32 fractions of a cent in looking at 72.27 cents U.S. Moving on to commodities, gold was down about $51.45 an ounce to 3,275. West Texas Intermediate Crude was up 79 cents to an even $70 a barrel. Western Canadian Select, however, was up about $2.14, $2.56 and 42 cents a barrel. Gas prices per liter in Regina can most commonly be found for about $1.30, $1.309. Lowest is about $1.14.9.
The Bank of Canada left the key lending rate at 2.75% and outlined a few reasons why. Tiff Mathlam says there are still too many unknowns. And as long as tariffs stay in place, the economy will operate less efficiently. But it does predict GDP to grow by 1% in the last half of the year. The governor did share some other good news, saying the consequences of the tariffs are less severe than feared and consumer and business sentiment is improving. The U.S. Federal Reserve is also holding its key lending rate. It's the fifth time it has announced a hold. Now, two of the governors are supporting a rate cut. And of course, the U.S. president has been hounding the chair, Jerome Powell, to cut rates. The short-term rate is 4.3%. And here's an example of just how hard those tariffs are hitting some Canadian businesses. AlGoma Steel reported a net loss of more than $110 million in its latest quarter. Canadian steel and aluminum face a 50% markup in the U.S. AlGoma is looking for half a billion dollars from Ottawa to support its operations. Those are your business headlines. I'm Merle Fernandez.
All right, coming up tonight on CTV, we got some Master Chef right after the show here, followed by more Gordon Ramsay if the first one wasn't enough, and Battle of the Generations as well, and Match Game. So a couple of game shows, a couple of cooking shows. Cooking shows always make me hungry, so it's a good thing it's almost supper time for us. Finally for us tonight, a Spanish collector is earning a posthumous place in the Guinness World Records for a massive collection of dog figurines.
He started his collection in the 1960s. It includes 5,025 fig, what, 5,025 figurines, soft toys, dog head walking sticks, and more. His kids did the application for him after his death last year, hoping they could get him that honor as a tribute to his life. Meanwhile, one of his siblings, an actual dog owner, lets their white terrier play with some of the, well.
Okay, so the white terrier does not count in the collection. He's not in the 5,025.
Now, they're not lonely.
You know, I also got a question about that, that one that was split in two. Does that count as one or two dogs, do you think, in the, in the grand total?
The way you're looking at me so seriously, I'm going to say it's one.
It's a Guinness World Records, Sabine. They're serious, they're in a book.
Well, you have to have a whole dog, I would assume.
I would assume so.